Anybody hear me?
Yeah.
You. All right. Everybody's like freezing up. Everybody's freezing up tonight.
Oh. You're in the whole area. You're the big picture here. Everybody else, little things on top of mind.
It's.
There you are.
Get on there. Let me check it out.
Best get going.
Where are we going?
Time to roll.
Time to roll. Here we go. We're live. All right. Turn my volume down. All righty, here we go. We're gonna get into our committee meetings. Tonight, we have four first readings, no second, third, or pending. And again, it's looks like the Jim Cott show. So Jim, go ahead.
We lost him.
No, he's there.
Now, we will open our finance committee meeting at six oh four. Our first resolution tonight. A resolution authorizing the hiring of a service department road superintendent as a division head and executive employee under the Fair Labor Standards Act and establishing compensation and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. Well, I guess, Mr. Stradson, do you want to speak on this? And then we can ask questions or go from there?
Yeah, sure. This is a, this is a, hey, first of all, everybody else should mute, I think, because I think we're getting a lot of background noise. Was that just me? This is a second in command to the deputy service director. It's a position that has been there, but hasn't been filled for quite a while. It is a non-union position, and it is a salary position. And so we, as we've been department by department trying to build succession and then, and basically properly staff the departments, we're finally at a point where we can do that. We've been covering that for an extended period of time with a memorandum of understanding with the union where one of the union guys worked kind of out of class as a work leader. And the the union has been patient with us, and we've done that for a couple of reasons. One was economic in terms of when we might be able to add another individual to that department, because I think it's maybe generally agreed that we're understaffed over there. So we had extended these memorandums of understanding, and they were very patient with us. And finally, it was say, you know, what do you guys want to do with this? And it became time to fill this. The plan is to to fill the position in it. We do intend at this point to, first of all, seek to hire from within. And then if we're not satisfied with what we have available to fill that spot, then we'd think about advertising and hiring from without. The position would not begin. We want to create the position and have the authority to fill the position, but the actual position wouldn't start. The work wouldn't start until March 1st of 2021. Because that's how long our memorandum of understanding currently goes with the union. So at the expiration of that, that would be the start date for this position. What our intention then would be is after the first of the year, in the first quarter of 2021, that we will come back to you and and seek to add an additional service department employee. Because the upside of having the second non-union salary guy is that it covers us when situations where we need supervision in two places, when we have situations when the deputy service director isn't in the office on vacation, et cetera. And so it gives us that buffer. But it also takes one of the guys away from the union workforce. Now, those, he could still do work depending on if there's no one else available. And by agreement with the union, so I think we're gonna end up like with one and a half employees when we finish this up. Additional employees, I think, when we, I think that's what it'll end up playing out to. So that's the idea. The salary is set to be commensurate with the other second in commands. And that's why you see the number that you see for that. But again, it wouldn't, if if you approve it, and we will then advertise it. At this point, we would advertise from within. And then if we fill it, we'll fill it with the understanding. It's not gonna begin, they wouldn't begin working that position till March 1st.
Okay, who else has questions?
So why, why would we want to do this now and not five months from now, four months from now? I'm struggling a little, I'm struggling a little bit with the timing.
Well, a couple of things happened. The, and some of them, it's maybe it's an act of good faith in a sense of what the future holds for some of our personnel. There's also a transition in the union representation. Gerard Colant, who has been the union rep for the Teamsters from the beginning, from the time that they formed the union over there. He's been with them all that time, and he is retiring. As a matter of fact, I think he's he's done. So it was something that he wanted to get some assurance for his guys while he was still in office. And, you know, the fellow who's been working, the that work leader position is, he's a likely candidate. I'm not going to be coy about that. But he has faithfully been willing to work in that position for, oh, gosh, probably two years. At least, I could pull it out, but we've extended it and extended it. And and he's wondered, hey, what's gonna happen here? I'd kind of like to know. So that's really why Andrew, Mr. Fetterman, was just to, we knew we were gonna do it. We could have waited till the first of the year. But sort of in good faith and to give them some assurance, that's why we decided to do it now.
Anyone else have questions about this?
Is this something we want to do tonight or a couple of weeks on? Or I mean, it's out there kind of far. Is it, I mean?
It's not urgent. I mean, it, you know, it's, it doesn't have to pass tonight. You know, whatever you guys prefer.
I mean, that's, that's the direction we're going. So that's gonna happen. So but I mean, it's just letting everybody know there's an option if we want to look at it for a couple of weeks. I mean, I'm good with it tonight, but you know, that's an option.
Paul, this is this is additional $100,000, basically, when you put in a new person.
We think that with the
Money right now.
No, I'm sorry, Jim. The, as it relates to the individual, and naturally, there's still gonna have to be an application filed and some vetting and and but at least at this point, that's the direction we expect that we'll probably end up. The this individual moving into a salary position is probably gonna be about a wash between what he makes right now with his overtime. So there won't be any, the additional expense will come from the new, you know, the new employee. If you guys, you know, if you assuming we come to you in the beginning of the year and say, we want to, we want to add somebody over there, and then assuming you decide that you want to. I'm trying to think. Let's see here. We would probably I want to see what the annual is for some of these guys. They're around 50. 52. So probably, it's probably 75,000 or so next year if we add the additional person. You know, Brian would be happy to come on and tell you how badly he needs another person. So we've known that for quite some time. I wish we could add two people over there. But yeah, all you have to do is look at the list of backlogs that we have on on ditch, you know, on the ditch enclosures and those types of things that we just can't get to. So. But I understood, Mr. Cots, I mean, we will have to see what, how finances look at the start of the year and do a projection. And if in fact, we can't do it, then we can't do it. But we don't, again, we're, you know, we're into March before we really have to make a call on that.
Well, like you said, the, with the union and whatnot, this superintendent, the road superintendent would would not necessarily be a worker, an additional worker, only in emergency situations or when, you know, nobody else is available type thing. So our staffing level is basically for the people out there going to ditches and doing, going into hard work is basically going to stay the same. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. And that's why when I, you know, that's why I'm telling all of you upfront that the plan is to add the additional person. So I mean, I didn't want to come to you and suggest this and then come in January and say, oh, by the way, gosh, now we need another guy. It, we, I always envisioned doing it this way. Filling that non-union position and adding at least one more employee. From the looks of things right now, I I think we're gonna be, you know, I think we're gonna be okay to do that from a financial standpoint.
Who else has questions? I think I'd like to ask that we take another reading on this and just, just, you know, because we got it so, so late. You know, just, just take another reading on it. If, you know, give everybody an opportunity to look at it, and if they have questions, be able to respond in two weeks.
Hey, David, if I may, and Mr. Cots, you make a good point in terms of these things getting to you. If it, as an aside, we've had, let's just say, we've had some difficulties in terms of getting the legislation to you folks in time to give it a fair consideration. And I take responsibility for that. And this time around, it, you know, it occurred again. A lot of times, it's because something comes up at the last minute, but this time around, you should have had this much sooner, and I apologize for that. So certainly, anything that you want to take additional time on, we fully understand. To remedy that, I think, I sent something out. I don't know if all of you have checked your emails, but I sent something out to all the department heads. And the council members and the administrative staff that effective immediately, all resolutions and ordinances to be presented to council for first readings must be submitted to the clerk of council no later than 4:00 PM on the Thursday of the week prior to the next scheduled meeting. So we'll use that as a deadline. That will give our clerk an opportunity to get those together and get them to you by the end of day on Friday. And then you'll have, you know, the full weekend and Monday, Tuesday for any research and questions that you might have and before we get to the Wednesday meeting. So we, to my knowledge, there's never been a deadline on this, and we want to fix this immediately. So now we do have a deadline. And hopefully, we won't have that situation in the future where where you're getting some legislation without really sufficient time to do your research on it. Thanks, Mr. Stock.
Yeah, and if they, if they did, they're just gonna have to wait that. I mean, and I understand there's times when something just hits your desk or hits somebody's desk late, but if it's something that they've been discussing, if they don't get there on that time, they're gonna have to wait. So they need to keep that in consideration.
Absolutely.
Because we do need to get it that late is just, it's hard to act on stuff. It's not very responsible on our part to see something, you know, less than 36 hours later, we're taking a vote on it. So it's very important that they they get on that page with that. So we appreciate, I seen the email, I appreciate that.
Hey, and I want one qualifier on it. I mean, this is not to say that and if something may come up out of nowhere, I mean, we may have those situations, and I'll leave it up to you guys if you want to act on it. But as I mentioned in the, what I sent out to everybody, that's, that's gonna be the rare exception rather than the the rule or the excuse for for late entry.
Yeah, and that can be, I mean, as far as if it gets to say, you know, when she's working on them Friday night, Saturday night. If she don't have it by then, that's fine. But if something comes in, that's could be a supplemental, but waiting to have something put on, we just, we're not gonna do that anymore.
Okay, and thanks for that, Paul. I certainly appreciate that. And my comment wasn't meant as as any type of slam or anything like that. It's just, you know, just stating it. So I hope you didn't take that the wrong way. It wasn't meant that way.
Is that your guy? Jim, are you at D N O two?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure, got all that background noise. I'm not sure. Is there a special event tonight? Or I'm not sure why we're doing that. Just a question.
Uh, just taking it on the road. So
All right, well, it's a little distracting, people. Okay.
So I'll ask for time on Resolution 20 R 50, and we'll move on to 20 R 51, a resolution offering New Franklin to enter into an agreement to join the Summit County Consolidated CAD project and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. And I guess, Mr. Leslie, you are, or Chief Leslie, you are here to speak on that, and I'll like.
Thank you. Yeah, this is something we've been looking at. The county went into a consolidation for their CAD system. What what that CAD is, is a software system for computer aided, or CAD stands for computer aided dispatch. The county bought into it with the idea that all of the different entities that have 911 centers would also possibly have the opportunity to buy into it. It's, it was more a consortium so that they could keep the cost down. The county's looked into it. A number of people are already using it. Summit County Sheriff's using it. The city of Green is also using it at this time. And a number of other, I believe Akron is going to, I know Akron and Fairlon are going to it this spring. But basically, it's a very robust system. It's more than just a CAD system or data entry system for the dispatchers. It's a system of, they can track where the vehicles are. They can track, the police can issue their tickets or write their reports right in their vehicles, which our police can do now, but it's a totally advanced system compared to what we're currently using. And then the other part of it is if they take, the police take in property, either stolen property, or they recover property or whatever. There's a property management aspect to it where they can actually print out a barcode, slap the barcode on the property, and then that barcode is tied to that, to that report or to that incident. So it's a real, real nice property management system also. There's a crew force which basically allows the dispatchers to look on the wall and see what, where vehicles are at all times, police and fire. So they'll know if a squad's, where their location is, if they have a, a call. They'll know where that squad is, whether it's available to respond or not. So it's a, it's a very good system. The other part of it too is it allows all of that information to be shared amongst the P S apps or the 911 centers. So in other words, as it is currently with the city of Green, the sheriff's office is their 911 answering point. Well, as the sheriff's office starts typing that information into the computer system, into the CAD system, then if it was a fire call previous to this, they had to say, okay, hold on, and transfer them to Central. At Central, then they would ask the same questions. They would repeat a lot of the information, a lot of the questioning. So what this allows is this allows that transfer of information seamlessly between the 911 center. So in other words, if, when the sheriff's office answers the call, they can start typing that information. As soon as they transfer that call, that information comes up on the dispatcher's screen at Central. Likewise, with the active 911, if a call for that's in the city of New Franklin, but because of the cell tower location, it picks up, it goes to Swisscom. Or, well, Swisscom is not a good, let's say it goes to Central. Central then could start typing in that information, and that information would carry over to us. Not to mention the fact that once we go ahead and combine dispatch, that that information then is stored under one dispatch center. So for, for the price, it's a very, very robust system.
And I would add that the as we proceed, your council has approved the, our participation in the COG and the joint dispatch. Green has another reading on that next week. They are already on this system, and we would, assuming that happens, in the event that happens, we would be, we would need to transfer to this system anyway. But it's, it's something as, as the chief Leslie has talked about, and Chief Davidson, as you know, God bless him, in a moment, the loss in his family isn't with us. But they're on board as well, and as something, this is, this is a tool that, that we would want to get on board with, with the county, even if we weren't gonna consolidate with Green. And I think it's a step into the, well, it's another step into the future, the regionalization that, and being part of that Summit County team.
Okay, who else has questions?
Is there something else we should wait another week or another two weeks on just to see what Green does, just to be sure? I know we could use it, but just, you know.
One of the issues is the training on this thing. And there is some training, and that's one of the reasons we advanced it, because we really feel we're gonna do it regardless. We're gonna make the transition. There's training that comes up in November that we need to, for the dispatchers in particular. And I talked with Ian Fietta, Fietta from Summit County, who's the coordinator of the Summit County Consolidated CAD today. And I guess there's three components to the training, and I'll let Steve, as soon as I start mumbling and jumbling, I'll let Steve jump in. But some of the training went towards the police themselves. And but the the component of training for the dispatchers, which is really the critical part for us, is coming up in November. And that's why we decided to advance the legislation so that we could get our dispatchers involved in that training. Because then that's gonna need to be, you know, a transitional piece. If we, you know, if in fact, the green piece happens. The, they did agree to break the initial fee into five year, five separate installments. So we've talked with Susan. I think, Susan, we're okay financially on this. Now.
Hit the button, and it didn't unmute. So like, yeah, we're fine on that. We've been, we've been kind of gearing up for this for a while because we know that we need to basically be in sync with the, with the other systems out there so that they can get their information in a better way. And we talked about this even back when we updated dispatch.
So this is one, if you're comfortable with it, I'd like to get this, I'm sorry, if we could get this passed, I think it would be helpful so that we can, I believe we're gonna do it, period. And if we, if we can get on board now, we can get in line for the November training for our dispatchers.
Does anything change once we go to COG, if we go to a cost, cost with this program?
The initial, I think the short answer, it may, but we, we're not sure that it will. So I want you to assume that it's not going to. The initial buy-in is, is New Franklin's buy-in, and a, and a good portion of that has to do, you know, with not just the fire, but the police. So a fair portion of, of the package of, it has to do as much or more with the police than it does with the fire. And that won't change once we, once we get with, once we do a joint dispatch. Steve, you got a thought on that one way or another?
No, you're correct, Mayor. Yeah, that, that five years over, the way it was explained is the five-year payment would continue. That's New Franklin's buy-in regardless of whether we're tied to or merged with the city of Green or not. That would be our buy-in. Where the cost change would come in would be in the, down the road with the maintenance fees, the yearly fees with that CAD system. Those fees then would be, those would be the responsibility of the COG to, to go ahead and, and take care of this, as far as the annual fee would go, the ongoing maintenance fees would be. But as far as the initial buy-in, that, that is a, that is unique or specific to our entity.
Yeah, so we think that that 28,000 annual fee can, may end up being absorbed, or at least a significant portion of it absorbed with the joint dispatch, because Green's already paying a similar fee. The buy-in fee, and I think Steve probably touched on this, but you know, they came to this, they, the county introduced this a couple of years ago. And the fee that we are, that we're quoted here is our, is suggested to us as our proportionate share. The county did the, the, the buy, this is at least advertised to us as a discounted rate, a group buying rate. So the county made the agreement with, with Tyler New World to go online with this. And then the more partners you get, you know, the, you know, the less everybody has to pay. So this is at least advertised to us as a discounted rate, and I don't have, you know, and I think that's probably accurate. But two years ago, you know where we were, and we didn't know where we were gonna end up. And at that point in time, it didn't make sense for us to, on top of everything else that we had to do to upgrade to be a primary P S app to take on this additional expense at that time as well. But we think now's the time.
So on the, the buy-in fee of 149,406, that's going to be split up over five years for us to pay. And it also says that, that installment plan, with the exception of hardware costs and Tyler technology upfront costs, do we know if we have any of those costs? What would be?
Actually, if I may, Mayor, I can answer at least a part of that right now. Hardware costs would be the things like our, should one of our computer systems need to be updated? Whereas it's not capable of running the programming, because it is a pretty, pretty robust, like I said, a robust system, robust programming. So it would be if we have an older computer system that may need upgrading, it would be things like that that are not included in this price. As it stands right now, we, they've looked at everything. We're not aware of anything hardware-wise that we would have to, to purchase with that. Not to say that down the road, they might not find something or find a computer or, or find a laptop or that, that need to be, you know, updated. They're currently looking at the police laptops in the, in the vehicles to, to ensure, but they are, I won't say they're 100%, but they're, they, they're pretty confident that they'll, they'll perform just fine at this point. Like I said, they didn't give us 100% on the, on the mobile data terminals in the police cars at this point, but they, they were pretty confident that they would be, given what they're already running. So that's where the hard, the additional hardware cost comes in. And then the, the Tyler New World costs, those are, those are pretty much already set in this 149,000. The other part of that, they said, would be is if we, for whatever reason, require additional training or training above and beyond what the county's already agreed to with that. So if we would have, for whatever need, we couldn't attend the trainings and we had to ask them for a special training, then obviously, the county's not gonna cover that. That's not covered in the county contract. We would have to pay for that training from Tyler. So that's where the additional training costs come in.
Okay, so the concerns I have, I mean, this obviously sounds like a great system, and it's getting a lot of praise throughout the county. Like you mentioned, the county's been using it for a couple of years. I think they still in town, online also with, with it, and seems to be working out really well, and I see the benefits. But I'm concerned that it's 60,000 a year for the next five years, and then approximately 30,000 a year continuing after that. And I'm especially concerned about what you said about the computers in our, our police cars and what we don't know at this point if, if we're gonna have to upgrade those and at what cost that might be. So I'm very concerned about the, the money that's involved in this.
Two things I would say, the first Two things I would say, the first of all, if it turns out these, the computers aren't sufficient for this hardware, then you really got to wonder if they're sufficient, period. And I think that puts us in the same situation that we were in a little while back with the radios, that we, we can't, we're not in, in such a dire economic straits that we can't make sure the guys out there in the field don't have the proper equipment. So if we got to upgrade the computers, we got to upgrade the computers. On that note, now as far as the annual fee, we pay an annual fee to Sundance right now. I, I can try to pull the file, Susan, do you have a recollection of, I thought it was around 20 grand, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, it's very close to that. I think it's like 18, 19,000, something like that.
Yeah, so there's an annual fee with Sundance as well. And to that extent, we are, we just don't, you know, I, I'd like to be able to tell you that the annual fee is going to be absorbed if and when we do the joint dispatch. I don't know that, and my best guess is a portion of it will be, because I think a portion of it is somewhat redundant because fire is fire, but we have police and they don't. So, you know, I, I expect that we'll have a reduced fee on that. So I don't think we're going to see, you know, a, a particularly significant difference between what we're paying it right now on an annual basis for that licensing and service fees.
Okay, well, that, that certainly does sound better. We may be getting the system for, you know, maybe $10,000 or less per year than what we're currently, our current system. So, so I can see that, yeah, but again, we're adding in the 30,000 a year for the, the five year installment. And who else has questions or comments?
I've got a comment. My concern is, you know, it's a great tool, you know, I've seen it, it works real nice. But my concerns are basically where are we going with Green? I mean, if, if we're going to go green with the fire and the, the police, the dispatching, I just don't see why we want to jump into this until we get that other one deal done.
Well, we would need this to be compatible with them, Mr. Hawk, that's, they're already on this. So this would make us compatible with the system that they already have in place. In other words, if we went with them and we weren't doing this, we'd have to, we would have to transfer from Sundance to Tyler anyway.
Anyone else have questions, comments? And what are your thoughts on voting on this tonight or waiting two weeks and giving it some, some internal thought?
I think it's good and we should go for it for tonight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, then I guess based on comments or, or whatnot, we will go ahead and seek a vote on this tonight. Moving on to our agenda, Resolution 20R 52, a resolution, annual operating appropriation budget declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't hear, but I'm going to, I'm going to speak on this one because this one's my, this one's mine. Basically, this has to do with all our CARESAC money, not only what we've gotten from the state, but also from Summit County. So basically, as Paul's been saying all along, this has kind of been a moving target, the directions, how we can use, what we're allowed to use it for, those kinds of things have been changing almost weekly. I had a seminar or webinar Tuesday with the auditor of state concerning what we can use it for, what, what the auditors are looking for. And then today, they sent out some newer guidelines. So I mean, it's just changing all the time, but the deadlines aren't moving fast as the changes are moving. So we wanted to make sure that we got the appropriations handled for this so that we could start trying to use some of these monies because we at least have kind of a, a baseline of what we know we can use those things for as far as personnel is concerned. So we wanted to make sure that we had these, the okay and the resolution to cover the encumbrances of these for personnel services so that we can start expending this money because we have a limited time to expend this money, otherwise we have to give it back.
We don't want to do that.
No, we do not.
If I could, yeah, and Susan's correct that it's been a moving target. The most recent, and you see there's two, the, the 403,42215, that's the sum, the money we got from Summit County, that is their payroll support program. And there are conditions on that one. And the conditions as written indicate that they can be used for 15% of police salary, 25% of fire EMS dispatch salary. And they're retroactive to March 1st. So those funds, we anticipate using fully in that, in that regard. The, I've got the total.
You want the previous total for that period?
Well, I get, well, in any event, I think we're at about, I think we're about 1.2 million in salary for that period. Well, let me put it this way, that, that will exhaust those funds. And they would all be used for payroll, that's the plan. And that's consistent with, with the, what the county, the conditions the county put on that program. The 206,000, but they have to be appropriated before it can be used for those purposes. And, and that's a condition of it. The 206,71454 that came from the state, that's really been a moving target. Can you use it at all for payroll? Can you use any of it for payroll? Can you use all of it for payroll? And the state has been waiting to see what the Department of Treasury has said, and there's been a variety of guidelines that have come down, and I've talked to you every other week about this, and every other week they changed. We think we have the final version, and the final version came out, I can't remember, 10, 12 days ago. And with the final version from the Department of Treasury, they are now, there's some magic words to this, that, that you can use it for, for payroll, for safety forces who are substantially dedicated to COVID. And they have now come out with a guideline because that's so ambiguous that we are, we are, not just we, municipalities are permitted to presume that 100% of our payroll is substantially dedicated to COVID. So that's how they cured that internally from the Department of Treasury, they were actually waiting on Congress to clarify that. And as you know, the Congress has not and probably will not. But as Susan has said, the auditor has weighed in on that. And we've been on the conference calls with all the mayors around the state and, and so the balance of these, let me cut to the chase. It appears we can use all the funds we got for payroll. And we didn't, you know, that's, we didn't know that at one time, that are we going to be able to use all of it? Let's come up with some other ideas that we can use it for. I still believe there's another 500,000 coming from the state. I, I believe that our total is going to be about 1.1 that we'll have. And, and we could use all of that for payroll replacement. Now, I'm also waiting for Spectrum to give us their final contract to try to expand the broadband to the residences in the areas of the city that are without broadband. And that is clearly an allowable use of these funds. And that would be somewhere in the range of 200, $225,000. So at least the, the plan from this end, today is just a matter of appropriating the funds. It's not a matter of saying how we're going to spend it, but I'm, I'm just trying to fill you in on what the plan is to how to spend it. When the balance of that comes in from the state, it'll be added, I believe, to that 206,000, we'll have to appropriate those funds as well. And I expect then coming to you and saying, listen, here's, here's how we plan to use those funds, a couple hundred thousand on the, on the broadband expansion, the balance of it on payroll replacement. And I, as, and I, I'm pretty confident that that's the final answer on this at this point. I don't think we're going to get any contradictory messages from the Department of Treasury. And the Auditor's Office has weighed in and said that, that they are on board with those, with the, with, with the guidelines that came from the Department of Treasury. So we're not going to have any problems with the auditors either. So I hope some of that made some sense, but that's the plan.
Absolutely. Anybody else have questions or comments?
I do have a comment, Jim, when you're talking, we do got one thing on Facebook. It's a little hard to hear you with all the background noise, so, and I'm having a hard time following, it's a little distracting. So that's my comment.
Okay, well, thank you for that. So we'll ask to waive the three readings on Resolution 20R 52, and we will close the Finance Committee meeting at 6:43.
Thank you, Jim. We're going to move to laws and ordinances. Andrea?
Thank you, good evening. We're going to go ahead and come to order at 6:44. We have one item on the agenda for the committee. It's ordinance number 20 dash zero dash O dash zero four, an ordinance adopting rules and regulations for the New Franklin Personnel Advisory and Appeals Board. This is new for us, Mayor.
Be happy to speak to it. Yeah, the charter, the voters approved the charter amendment in November of 2019 to convert from civil service to a Personnel Advisory and Appeals Board. And the, what you see here, the charter, and the language of the charter is what guides where we go from there. And the charter provides that this board, three disinterested voters, you folks approved the three, the three-person board at the end of the year last year, Tim Hoffman, Sue Wiggington, Mary Stormer. So they are in place. And what's required is under Charter 7.03(c), that the mayor shall propose such personnel rules to that board, Personnel Advisor and Appeal Board, or the PAB, which assure compliance with the principles and policies adopted by the charter. And then the Personnel Advisor and Appeals Board shall report to council its recommendations, and then council made by ordinance adopt those rules. So the, the bigger job for the PAB is going to be consideration and recommend, recommendation to you of the policy manual, the holy grail that we've been chasing for two and a half years to try to replace our Franklin Township policy manual. And as you well know, we're very, very close on that. We had the final draft, we had some comments and they were good comments that were offered to us. We sent that back to our legal, they gave us some opinions on that, and I forwarded out to you folks, I can't remember, maybe Monday morning, the revisions based upon the suggestions and based upon then the responses from legal. So we expect to have that as a final form to then be considered and recommended by the Personnel Advisor and Appeals Board. But before they do that, they had to have their organizational meeting. And to have an organizational meeting, they had to have some rules. So we put together these rules and I proposed them because that's what the charter tells me to do. And basically, they're pretty rudimentary and they're very, very similar to what the rules were for the Civil Service Commission, except a lot of them meet from the Civil Service Commission. A lot of those rules aren't needed here, they're now absorbed into the policy manual. In any event, we got those proposed rules out to the, the PAB board. They had a chance to review them, they met on, let me see, September 29th, I think, had their initial organizational meeting, and they considered those rules, and they unanimously voted to recommend those rules to council. So these are just the rules for the operation of, of the, the PAB, the Personnel Advisor and Appeal Board, how they hold meetings, how they, how they adopt their rules, and then finally, how they'll go about hearing procedures for appeals, which will be their primary function. And it probably won't be a lot, but that's what they will do now. And so that's what those rules are about. And, and they unanimously recommended to you that you approve those, but they're not, they're not their rules until you approve them. So I am asking you to consider approving them tonight. They meet again, let's see, 14th, 21st. I mean, you, you know, we could, you know, make it a nail biter and wait till two weeks, but their next meeting is October 27th, and they're going to be considering the policy manual. And, and hopefully at that point in time, approving that so I can get that back to you. And we can try to get a policy manual in place before the year ends. So if you're comfortable with them, I'm, I'm asking you to consider waiving the three readings on these.
Mayor, I just had one comment at the introduction.
Yes.
The second paragraph, and I remember this was a problem in a municipality, so I just pointed out because, you know, it just came to, you know, ahead, I don't remember, I think it actually resulted in some kind of a legal action, but it says each member shall have been a resident of the municipality or territory annexed thereto for a period of two years preceding the appointment. And I think that it should say two consecutive years immediately preceding the appointment. Do you don't you remember, there was somebody that, there was a problem and it was somebody, it was, they lived there one year, 100 years ago, and then they lived there six months, it just was, I just, I, I guess I remembered something about that case that that jumped out at me, but it's probably not that significant.
Well, here's, and, and no, you're, I, I, I think you're correct, and I know we ended up talking about that last time around, I think on charter review, because they said, well, they could, yeah, it could have been two years, but not continuous. Here's the, I'll call it a problem, because in a sense it is. That is the language that's in the charter amendment. So on the upside, yeah, so that's why, that's why we have that. It's, it says exactly that in the charter. You know, I know, I know that was discussed during the, but it, it didn't get cured, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
It just jumps out.
So we're stuck with it, for lack of a better term, because that's what the charter requires.
I doubt with this board and with the function of this board, that it's going to be a problem. It's just one of those things. And in reviewing the rest of the rules and regulations, again, I don't see any issues and they can always, barring, you know, being bound by the charter, we can make the changes. I think you know more generally as you go on.
Agree.
With that, any members of the committee have any questions or comments? Anybody else in laws and ordinance or other council members have any comments? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and ask that we waive the three readings tonight. Cool? Okay, we are going to adjourn at 6:51.
Thank you, Andrea. Any other question or anybody having anything in their committees they'd like to discuss? With none, I'm going to go ahead, check the time here. Call the order, the City of New Franklin Council Meeting this Wednesday, October 7th, 2020, at 6:51. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and get a roll call, Kelly.
Mr. Cots? Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Federman?
Here.
Mr. Hawk?
Here.
Ms. Norris?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Stock?
Here. All right, and Judy is not with us this evening. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular scheduled meeting of September 16th, 2020.
Second.
You have a second, any questions, discussion on the minutes? All righty, roll call, please.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Federman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawk?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cots?
Yes.
Right. We're going to go into public comments. Katie, I just got, I'm just going to read the one. Actually, I'll read them both. There's a couple of comments. One comment is, "Too much interference with Jim's screen. It's hard to hear him." Next one is, "Sounds like the city should be moving toward this new system despite a consolidation with Green occurs. Plenty of benefits with reasonable cost increases over the current system." Those are two comments I have so far. Katie, is that what you got?
Yeah.
I'm having a little trouble. I'm going in and out on my phone, on my Facebook, too.
No, I just refreshed it, and that looks like you got everything.
All right, cool. All right. I'm sure everybody had time to do their comments or anything, so. Again, we're going to have, we have four first readings tonight, and no second, third, or pending. Moving into first reading of Resolution Number 20-R-50. Kelly?
A resolution authorizing the hiring of a service department road superintendent as a division head and executive employee under the Fair Labor Standards Act, and establishing compensation in declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution has been assigned to the Finance Committee, and we're going to ask for time.
All right, time is requested. Time is granted. Move to Resolution Number 20-R-51. Kelly?
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement to join the Summit County Consolidated CAD Project and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee, and we move to waive the three readings on 20 R-51.
Second.
You have a first and second. All right, Kelly, roll call.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
All right, I'm waiting for another one. I guess we only got six of us. All right.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And we move to adopt Resolution 20 R-51.
Second.
You have a first and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
And Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Thank you. All right, we'll move to ordinance number 20-O dash zero four. Kelly?
An ordinance adopting rules and regulations for the New Franklin Personnel Advisory and Appeals Board.
We go ahead, and I would ask that we waive the three readings for this piece of legislation.
Second.
We have a first and second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
And Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Thank you. Now I'd go ahead and make a motion that we adopt this ordinance.
Second.
You have a first and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts? Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
And Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That passes six to zero. Move to our last piece of legislation this evening, which is Resolution Number 20-R-52. Kelly?
A resolution authorizing additional appropriations to the 2020 annual operating appropriation budget and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on 20 R-52.
Second. We got a first and second roll call.
Ms. Norris? Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
And Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 20 R-52.
Second.
You have a first and second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Norris?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. We'll take care of our legislation this evening. Move into Mayor's Report.
All right. It's the part we've all been waiting for. Okay, I got a few things. Let's see. Oh, we have a hearing. Well, I need to ask you whether or not you wish to request a hearing on the transfer of LLC ownership for Page Jack's LLC DBA Deets S. Landing, Deck and Patio. And this is a, basically, a, let's see, application for change of LLC membership interests. So we sent this out to you. And the Department of Liquor Control, when they have a request for this type of transfer, they ask the municipality whether or not the municipality wishes to have a hearing on this. I have not heard any objections from any of you. And so if you don't have any objections, I would need a motion to not request a hearing on this transfer.
I move that we do not request a hearing on this transfer.
Second.
Second. All right, we'll just do a roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Hawke?
Yes.
Ms. Norris?
Epstein.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
All right, we have passed at five, zero with one, Epstein. All right, there you go, Paul.
All right, thank you. Similarly, this is the time of year that we are advised by the Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, that every permit holder in New Franklin has to file a renewal application once per year. And when this happens, if the legislative body wishes to object to renewal of the license at any of the licensed premises, that legislative body has to pass a resolution, a separate one for each premises that they might object to. The resolution has to state that it's based upon substantial legal grounds, and it also requires an opinion from the chief legal officer that the objection is supported by substantial legal grounds. And if there's going to be an objection to any of the permit holders in New Franklin, we would have to do that no later than the next council meeting, because those objections and the chief legal officer's statement would have to be forwarded down to the Department of Liquor Control, postmarked no later than November 2nd. I will, well, let me, we've had, we, we have one establishment that's been in the news. And let me just be forthright about it. Going into the season, there were concerns, because very early on, it was circumstances that were placing a burden on our police. We had meetings with the owners and the manager. And since that meeting, and that was, I don't know, June anyway, we have not had circumstances that constitute, that issue was resolved. And quite frankly, I told those folks at that meeting that if it kept up, where our police were burdened, and it was creating safety issues for us from the standpoint of security and fights and those kind of things, and putting our police in a bad situation, that I would certainly recommend that you object. And they said, what do you want me to do? And I said, I want you to make sure that doesn't happen, and you know, we don't have that problem. They've been compliant in that regard. Now, they've had other problems that have been reported in the press. And they've had problems complying with some of the Director of Health's orders in that regard. And in fact, it's been reported, this is, you know, all public record, that they actually had two violations they had to pay fines on. I'd mention all that to say to you that it's not like, you know, we're not aware that didn't happen. My personal take on it, and then, this is your call, not mine, but I'd just tell you how I feel. The Department of Liquor Control and the Summit County Public Health Department are charged with making sure that they are compliant in those areas. And when they're not, they cite them, and we know there's one bar in Summit County that actually lost their license. I'm not uncomfortable allowing them to continue to police that establishment in that regard. From our perspective, they're not causing a problem for our police department at this point in time. So I'm not asking you to object. I'm not saying if you want to, that's clearly your call. But I'm not, you know, and a part of that is, you know, they do a lot of businesses. I'm sure there's a lot of people out here, a lot of local people enjoy that, you know, that establishment. And I don't know, I guess I should say, I think they're trying, so. Other than that establishment, I wouldn't be aware of any other establishments that have hit our radar that would compel me to say to you, you ought to take a look at this one as well, and you might want to consider filing an objection. So that's my take on the whole thing, but ultimately, this is for you folks to decide whether or not you want to proceed and consider an objection to the renewal of any of the permit holders in New Franklin.
I mean, I have no objections, Paul, so I'll state my case on that.
Paul?
Yeah.
I believe that the renewals have been delayed for three months.
This letter comes September 11th, so they could have been extended. I don't know.
Yeah. I just know, we have not.
Oh, you would know.
We have not had to renew ours. The renewal date's been pushed. I don't know if that impacts that objection or not, but just wanted you to know.
All right. So this is not something that I need a motion, or you have to take action on. You can consider among yourselves, and if council decides that they feel they want to do something, probably should let us know sooner rather than later, so we can get you hooked up with the law director and put in place, well, first of all, determine whether there's substantial legal grounds, and get that part moving. All right, let's see. The rest of it, a little bit more mundane. We've had conversations about stop sign on Congle Road. We have, we did a traffic study up there. It turns out during the period, we studied it for six or seven days, September 16th through September 21st. It came out to about 800 cars per day. 14% of them, no, 1%, 1 and 1/2% were more than 10 miles an hour over the limit. 29% were within 10 miles of the limit. The speed limit's 40. So, and then, so 70% were within the speed limit. I'm giving you the summary from what we did. It would be 48, or about $4,900 bucks for lighted signs up there. And as you're aware, we've had vandalism issues, but, you know, we got to address those. I talked with our law director, and I talked with our deputy service director. As you know, we recently did this over on Pearlman, and with good results. I haven't had any complaints. I drove up, I've been up there about twice since, and I like it. But when you're putting stop signs in, you're not supposed to put stop signs in to regulate speed. The Ohio Revised Code, we are a home rural municipality, so we've got a lot of latitude, but we're still required to be, you know, generally compliant to the Ohio Traffic Manual guidelines. And those guidelines suggest that you don't use stop signs for speed issues. There's been a consistent suggestion that it's dangerous up there, and potentially it is, I guess. But the thought from our people is that it actually, if we're going to do it at all, it's something that maybe we would consider when the Congle Road Bridge is reopened. I don't want to say if. But when the Congle Road Bridge is reopened, it may be, it may be worth revisiting at that point in time, quite frankly. And I think I would be inclined to say, let's put them up there at that point. But to do it now, I just, I don't think there's a need. Knock on wood, we've been fortunate. We really haven't had accidents up there. So, but I want to let you and everybody else out there know that it's not something that we ignored. We've spent some time looking at it. Anybody who wants to weigh in on that at this point, feel free.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Okay, number four, trick or treat? Have at it. That's the message of New Franklin. Hey, you know, if the lights are on, you knock. If the lights are off, you don't knock. And I am compelled to say that if you have signed up for the Do Not Knock program, and we've got over 250 residents that have signed up, this doesn't help you. It does not apply to goblins, or ghosts, or any of those little guys running around trying to get some candy. So the website has the dates for the different municipalities, and when trick or treat's going to, we'll talk about it, I guess, again in two weeks. We're hearing these creative things about getting some PVC pipe, maybe? If you're the homeowner, and you slide, they put the candy in, and it slides down to them, so you don't have to hand it off, so. And I will say publicly, Donna Skoda, from the Director of Summit County Public Health, people had asked her whether or not you had to quarantine the candy when you get it home. Yeah, I know. And she said, you know, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to, you know, to put it on the table and don't eat it till the next day. But, you know, I think we told you, good luck with that if you have kids. So that's it. On a more serious note, the COVID numbers are up, and I think I got a duty to tell you that. We get the notice, we posted this, but I'm going to say it again for everybody. Summit County Public Health notifies us whenever there's a confirmed COVID case in New Franklin, so that we can notify our safety forces. If they have to make a call somewhere, they're aware that the household they're going into, somebody has COVID. So that's why we get that info. That's been going on since April. From April through September 25th, we had a total of 60 reported cases. So from April through almost the end of September, 60 cases. In the last 11 days, from September 26th to now, we've had 39 cases. Now, yeah, I know. And then there's some, well, you know, there's a little bit more testing. Well, I get that, but I'm not, you know, there hasn't been any random testing set up out here. Anyway, it suggested to me that these 39 cases are people who had symptoms, and because they had symptoms, they went and got tested, as opposed to people lining up at Rite Aid and saying, let's test, and oh my goodness, I got, gee, it turns out I got COVIDed, you know, I don't even have symptoms. So I think we got to treat it as if they're all cases where people had symptoms, not to sound alarm, but just to say, you know, we got to be careful. And I know there's two schools of thought on this, but I just, I'm going to share this. You know, fortunately, our president, God bless him, you know, he had it. Now it looks like he's okay, and I guess there's such a thing as, we know there's such a thing as mild cases. We know there's such a thing as people that are never symptomatic. But we got a call from, well, we were trying to get some service work done at my house. That's all I'm saying. Guy comes every year, and we call, and the wife says he can't come this year, because he's got COVID. He's in the hospital. He's on a ventilator. And that's not to, oh, poor us. It's just to say, we all got to be careful out there. So please, continue to be careful out there, and, you know, mask up when you're in groups and crowds in public places. But that's what's going on with COVID. I'll keep you posted if those numbers, you know, when I get them, I'll share them with you guys. And then, nothing specifically that we're called upon to do, except be careful. The last thing, we had firearms discharge. We had that good committee. committee put together and they had recommendations. And about this time last year, we were ready to do something, introduce something to you to see if you wanted to put an ordinance on. And and House Bill 228 got passed. And that bill arguably limited the authority of municipalities to regulate firearm discharge. And it created a lot of distress around the state. And because most cities, you can't fire, you can't discharge a firearm. So anyway, we waited and we were told that they were going to address that, and they were gonna, they were gonna make it clear that it wasn't meant to to take away any authority that a city had to regulate discharge a firearm. And they were going to make amendments. Well, then COVID happened, and then nothing happened, and then nothing happened, and then nothing happened. And I was on a conference call with the Ohio Municipal League about two weeks ago, and I asked them that specific question, what's going on with House Bill 228? And they said, nothing. So that's where things are with that. And as a result, we certainly are not in a position to recommend to you any, anything relative to, well, those recommendations that came from that firearm discharge, the community committee that we put together. So we're still on hold on that. I'm not going to report all the time on it, but it's been a while since I talked about it. And I want to let you know, the latest news is there's nothing that we can do about that right now. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Move into finance. Susan?
Um, we are, actually, I've got pretty much no news right now, but we are very busy. We're gearing down toward the end of the year, so we've got lots of extra webinars and and training that we have to do gearing up for that. And also, we have the addition of the CARES Acts and and all those webinars and all that information and the influx of the money. And so we're, we're really actually very busy compared to last year at this time, right before the end of the year. But other than that, everything seems to be going smoothly, and we'll just keep on pushing ahead. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Move into old business. Any old business? Going once, going twice? New business? Any new business? All righty. Katie, I have not seen anything come up. Have you had anything?
Nothing.
How many, how many viewers did we have tonight?
We were up to 16 at one point that I saw.
Wow. Must have been, we lost them, though. Wasn't that exciting, apparently? Yeah, I don't, I didn't see, just a couple comments was all I had. So, Paul, we need an executive session?
We do not.
Hey, Paul.
No, no, we do not.
All right. I'm gonna make a motion to, okay, thank you. I want to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor? Aye. Just wave your hand if you say an aye. Aye. Okay. Thank you. Our next council meeting will be October 21, 2020, 6 o'clock, committee. And that's it. Good seeing everybody and stay safe and good night.
Good night.
Good night.